We will call the meeting of the Planning Commission to order. And should we have the roll call, please?
Commissioner Adams.
Here.
Riley.
Here.
Contreras.
Here.
Shrupp.
Here.
Altamirano.
Here.
Vice Chair Baker.
Here.
Chairperson Meyer.
Here. Commissioner Shrupp, would you lead us in the pledge allegiance, please?
My pledge allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic through which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice
Is there any citizen input on anything other than what is on the agenda tonight? Seeing none. We'll move on to the consent items, which are the minutes. Do any commissioners have any comments on the minutes? If there are, yes.
I'll move the consent calendar.
I have a motion for a consent. Do we have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That's approved. Staff and commission reports. The commissions have done any things since our last meeting?
Well, I went to the PG&E opening.
Yeah.
I think everybody.
I think almost everybody went to the PG&E opening. Anything else?
Well, I think they did a nice job and gave tours and it was good to see kind of their transparency and their commitment. I just wanted to give them a shout out for that.
Very professional, very exciting. I did go to the design review committee, which we'll talk about a little bit later when we actually formalize who's on the design review committee. And for the item, I believe it was taken off each, no, that wasn't, for another item. That was on the, that was last Tuesday.
Right.
And then I think various people have been to the playground building, build out this week. And anybody that hasn't been, make some time, show up. They will put you to work. You will learn things that you had no idea that you could do.
If I can, I'll give my plug now.
Yes.
See, this T-shirt can be your official badge of honor. This is the Project Playground Volunteer T-shirt. And all you have to do is, you can either go online, if you got my last Friday update, we talked about it, but I know that Chairman Meyer was out there. It's a gift to this community and it's a gift to yourself to go to this build. It's a chance for you to do something that really is magical. It doesn't matter what skill level, if you're a construction person or not, not a construction worker.
I was now happy that they, they teach me how to use tools.
I made Commissioner Meyer look like a professional.
This playground is going to be amazing. And, you know, for you to go and give the shifts eight o'clock, 12:30.
4:30.
Five, 5:30. Those are the shifts. You get lunch, you get dinner, you get lots of snacks. But more importantly, you're going to go out there and you're going to do things that you've never done before. And on Sunday, 5 o'clock, when those kids go and attack that playground, it's going to be incredible. And you sit back and it's like, really? Can you really build an amazing, and go from zero to an amazing playground? The artistry of some of the things that they're building will blow your mind. It's starting to come out of the construction tent. You've got to do it. And get your friends out there, too. Now, if, if, you will have regrets and your friends and family and everybody will legitimately have regrets. There are few communities that can pull this thing off. And it's one of those things that is uniquely winters. Our ability to come together and do something amazing. And it's, it's a wonderful shot. The Project Playground team, they have pulled off something that is just, they're, the organization is there, the group, the, the design firm is called Play by Design. And my goodness, you, you have a shot at going and being a part of something that you will remember your entire life. And I'm not overstating that. I will give you a money-back guarantee. You go out there, you don't have the time of your life doing it. You know, there are people out there using routers and.
You do not have to know anything. Just show up and, and somebody will show you what to do and how to do it. There are different color T-shirts. John failed to mention that the blue ones, like the one I had, is the, what a grunt gets to wear. There are other colors for leaders and construction people and yellow for, I don't know.
City of winters.
We got these because our public works people dropped by and they, they've also got to work out in the street. And our risk management gets like really mad if they're out in the street wearing blue T-shirts. So we decided to form, form our band together and I can tell you though, I wore this and the first thing they did was they made, made me paint and I told them. Anyway.
It makes it official.
But you know what? The blue shirt is, is the shirt of honor. So get out there and they're pretty awesome.
Discussion items. First one up is on the application by PG&E site plan design review.
Chairman, I'm going to have to recuse myself from this one. My, my company that I work for does some, some work with PG&E, so I'm going to step aside for this.
All right. We'll head into the step out into the hall of shame.
To the jail, to the old jail cell.
Thank you.
And shut the door.
And shut the door.
And shut the door.
They may come and get you.
Yeah.
So the item tonight has to do with interpretation of the zoning code as it relates to a section of the code that requires 50% parking lot shading when a facility is built. And there is language in our code that allows a person as the director or in this case if the director so chooses, the planning commission to determine if something meets the intent, even though it may not be explicitly called for in the zoning code. In this case, PG&E is asking approval to install carports with photovoltaic systems on top of the carports and the major portion of the center section of the student parking. The resultant effect of installing, of course, to remove 26 trees that were not put in place to provide that shading. The, as I said, the code allows for an interpretation as to whether or not substituting carports for trees meets the intent. And to understand the intent of the parking lot shading is to reduce the heat island effect that's caused by asphalt paving. Obviously, the carports will do that. And plus is they'll do it almost instantly, the minute they're installed, whereas the trees have up to 15 years to achieve that objective. That's pretty much it. The ones on the roof of the building, which show up in your site plan, are not required to go through planning commission approval. They can be approved administratively. But you do see them also installing some on the roof in case you're interested. There are eight conditions of approval that are included, the most significant of which was staff is recommending that the columns for the, and the support structure for the carports be painted the PG&E beige and that the fascia for the actual roof part be painted the blue, the PG&E blue, just to add a little more interest than the standard color, whatever they would come from, it's the factory color. There is a representative here from the photovoltaic company that's doing the work for PG&E and there is a representative from PG&E. If you have any other questions that I can answer, they're, they're here to possibly answer for you.
Questions?
I'll hold my talk after the public hearing.
I'll ask two. It says they'll replace the, move the trees to somewhere else on the property?
Does it say that in the application?
It says it on attachment A.
Yeah, okay. That's where I thought you saw it.
Yeah? Is that accurate?
That is accurate.
Do we know where?
We don't at this time, but if you allow me to work with them on that, we can see that that's done. And the nice thing is the trees aren't going to waste.
Yeah. I'm, it's more a matter of curiosity. I mean, the idea with the trees is, as you said, that it stops the heating of just blacktop. Does, do the carports with solar panels on them, do they have a similar effect?
They do.
On blacktop?
Well, I suspect you get some heat reflection from the photovoltaic system, but obviously the carport shades the asphalt.
Yeah.
Thereby reducing the heat.
And we get the electricity.
Yep. And yeah, and you get the upside of reducing carbon footprint by providing photovoltaic. So it's sort of a double win that a tree obviously doesn't necessarily provide.
Other questions before we open it to public? Okay, we'll open this at 6:42. Do any questions or comments by the public on this? No? No? Seeing none at 6:42, we will close the public hearing on that. And now Commissioner Baker will have a question.
Or a couple, maybe. So my first one is more of a statement than a question. So I like the fact that they are going to plant the same number of trees and also the added photovoltaic. And it would be interesting, yes, if you can quantify how that will help the city needs AD32 requirements for carbon reduction because certainly we're going to get a carbon increase with the gas academy and now an offset. So it'd be interesting to see how that impacts our climate requirements.
I couldn't answer that off the top of my head. I would say favorably, just from my understanding of how the law works. But I couldn't tell you or quantify how much. But you're, you're providing, you know, clean energy.
Can you say what the law is?
Well, it's reduced, go ahead.
So for the site, obviously, the, the, putting the PV on, on the site is going to reduce the overall carbon footprint of, of the site. Equal number of trees, the, this will probably more than 50% shade, gives a 15-year head start, great for the site. When it comes to our, our climate action plan, the biggest challenge that the city has is our vehicle miles traveled. That's for us and, you know, to, to crack that nut is, is probably the toughest thing that we do. So probably isn't going to help us as much because it, you know, being a primarily residential community, that's, that's the driver of our, our Achilles heel for our greenhouse gas is just the, the MTS. For us, that's where it gets to. You know, we always tried to argue that we'd like to consider trees as part of our carbon footprint offset and that we'd like to include the greater winters area because we probably have millions of trees around us. But absent that, we probably aren't going to, the same, this isn't going to help the city in general.
Have you had someone in the audience who wish to speak?
The overall.
He may come up on the mic.
Like I said, the overall PV proposed photovoltaic system, carport as well as roof, is expected to offset about 49 to 50% of PG&E's current training facility energy, which is about 100, I think it's 100,000, 1,000 megawatt hours per year. So a pretty considerable amount of energy for this facility. I don't know the exact carbon offset that is, but I can say this is a pretty considerable system and should have more effect than 26 trees.
So it, so it does mitigate the intensification in the community by doing that?
Yeah, exactly. It would offset because, you know, we can get the actual amount of carbon dioxide tons, but I would say it would be considerably greater than 27 trees, 26 trees. And those trees will be relocated anyway.
Okay. My second question is, will these be static carports or will these be solar ports?
These will be solar carports, so they will not be waterproof, if that is the question. There essentially will be gaps between the solar modules. They will mitigate most of the rain and sunlight that comes through, but there will be slight cracks in between. So they are a solar structure, not a fully waterproof carport structure.
Great, thank you.
Can I get a name?
Mark, oh, sorry. Mark Lawrie with Evergreen Innovation Group.
Thank you.
That was my question.
Okay. Any other questions? Sounds like a great addition to me. So I guess at this point, is there a motion?
Call the staff recommendation.
Is there a second? Second? We have a motion, we have a second. Any other questions, comments before we vote?
Just, just for the record, so I didn't get it as a condition, it's okay if they work with staff as to where the trees get relocated.
I'll take that a minute.
Okay.
Is the second acceptable?
So the motion is with, staff will handle where the trees are relocated to. All in favor of the staff recommendation? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? It passes. Thank you. Everybody with PG&E, now we need to go get, great, if we could.
Close us to the door. That's your panel.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we are, we have canceled the, the next one, correct Dave? Yes, if you could continue it to date certain, which would be November 14th.
Postpone to November 14th. Okay? So that item, item B will be postponed to November 14th. And now we move on to item C, public hearing and consideration of zoning code amendments to prohibit outdoor cultivation of marijuana and commercial marijuana uses.
Cannabis. So.
It sounds better if we use cannabis.
Yeah, that's, that's the new term. They've, they've.
Changed the law.
Abandoned marijuana, so it's the only name for it. So I don't bore you all with the history. I think all of you know that there's been various propositions that have been before the voters and over the years, those have all been passed. And the most recent being that you are allowed to, well, you were always allowed to have medical marijuana since 96, but now individuals can grow their own marijuana. And six plants are allowed for an adult. And one of the issues with cannabis is where those plants are grown. They're typically grown outside, although they can be grown in a greenhouse or even in some instances inside a house. So the, the state law has changed and our ordinance isn't current with the state law, so we needed to do some updating to make it current. And then we also wanted to address the issue that I just mentioned about whether or not outdoor grow would be allowed. And so in this ordinance that's before you that was drafted by the city attorney's office and secret is here from the city attorney's office, you're adding definitions to the zoning code for cannabis and commercial cannabis activity. You're amending the existing definitions of what commercial marijuana cultivation is and medical marijuana. You're deleting the definition of medical marijuana cooperative. You're amending the section having to do with nuisance abatement, expand it to include prohibition of dispensaries and all commercial cannabis activity. You're adding a new chapter to the zoning code to specifically address cannabis use. And that chapter could be ultimately amended in the future if the city chooses to change its position on commercial activity of, of growing cannabis, then that simply would be an amendment to the code. The city attorney's office is looking to, as I said, get a recommendation from the city, planning commission to the city council. You don't necessarily have to agree with everything that's in this ordinance, but some recommendation tonight is what we're looking for so that the council can act on this before the first of the year. And as I said, the city attorney is here, city manager knows a lot about the history and personally, I think, knows about some examples of outdoor cultivation that have created some problems from some of the adjoining neighbors. So he can obviously weigh in on that subject as well.
Commissioners, questions?
I'll wait till after the public hearing.
Yeah, I've got questions already.
Then at 6:51, we will open this to a public hearing, comments hearing. And at 6:51, seeing none, we will close that. And now commissioners.
My question is, currently, you're, you're allowed to grow six plants in your backyard.
Correct.
And we're talking about making that indoors only.
Correct.
Now, what will happen if somebody chooses not to grow it inside their house? They're growing it in their backyard, a neighbor complains about the smell or doesn't like, you know, whatever, looks over the fence and says, this is going on. What happens?
So it would be handled like other nuisances. It would be reported to someone at city hall and then we would begin the same process that we do under abating any other type of nuisance. We'd notify the property owner of the law and what the obligation is. We'd give them some time to comply. And failure to do so, it could eventually escalate its way up to the city attorney's office. But, you know, we would just handle it like any other code enforcement.
So there's no, no police involvement until way down the line?
No, no.
Okay. Kennedy, with Prop 64, marijuana is legal.
According to the state law.
At, at the state level. And there's no disputing that. The issue is, is with the outdoor grows. As, as things have kind of went on their way through, when it was medicinal, we started to see the, the backyard grows that were happening. And no, we've never taken, except for some people that had illegal grows under the medicinal side. We have taken some action against some of those folks, but kind of as things unwound, it's really simple. If people had a medicinal marijuana card and they could, they could kind of trace the number of plants that, that they had, we've never really addressed it. Now marijuana is legal, that's fine. But we're addressing the nuisance value that we know exists and that has to do with the, the pungency of the smell. Right now is the perfect time. If you want, we can give everybody an address to go drive by. And, and it's, it's simply, it's, it's not fair to the people that are out there because there is a reason why they call it scum weed. The, the permeation of, of the air around people's houses is, is, it's a nuisance. I liken it to the idea of somebody having a pig. Pigs are legal. They just aren't legal in, in your backyard. They create ancillary issues. The, the solution is really simple. Do it inside. You can go and get a tough shed, you can do some things that can, can make it. My goodness, in, I would imagine that by sometime in February or March, the ability to go out and purchase marijuana is very easy. The idea that everybody needs to be a home baker on, on everything typically doesn't need to exist. And we brought this, there was a workshop, I believe, two years ago with the, the planning commission where we went over it and, and it was just a workshop. There was really no recommendations that have gone from that. And we're now just bringing a recommendation. We'd like to take it to the council and, and, you know, if people want to grow it in their backyard, they, they can knock themselves out. They can go, they can put it in a shed. There is a way to do air filtration that will, will cure it. They'll be able to grow, you know, year round if they want versus having to deal with the seasons. So that, that really is the background, is the nuisance value. We know that there are some, some houses that are very severely impacted. And now with, with implementation of Prop 64 on, in January, as far as many things, there's many alternatives that people have. We're just trying to establish our base.
So one, one more question. I'm familiar with a little bit of the process that, that goes on, but how long, if, if you have somebody who will not, who's growing this stuff and says, I'm going to continue growing it in my backyard, I don't care. How long does that process take before you get rid of the plants and, and, you know, help the neighbors out?
It takes months. It does. Marijuana has a growing season in, in this region, it does. And for, for us, it, it'll take months to, to abate. So, I, I mean, we're going to end up, will we end up chasing people? We will. You know, the pungency of the marijuana is when the season, when it's growing and flourishing. And that's, that's when the problem exists. And it's just, in, in our case, we're going to get this on the books. And the thing that's nice is that if, if, if somebody really wants to, to, to challenge us on this, will we turn it over to the city attorney's office eventually? Yeah, we will. And we'll probably end up taking them to court. And if, you know, in, in some cases, the ability to, to bring that neighboring property owner in to, to be able to testify, and, and, you know, ultimately, in winters, I can tell you, in 99,000 cases out of all of them, we never get to that. Neighbors work well together. But in this case, we're looking for something to point to. And we can just say, hey, here's your alternative. And, you know, it's interesting, I, I've, I've got neighbors that, that do this and they just said, hey, is it cool if, if we do it in our backyard, in, in some type of shed? I say, yeah. You know what they do? They come here, they get a permit, they put it in a tough shed and all's good. Does the process of dealing with it as a nuisance, is that, is there, does that potentially work up to fines? Dollar fines, medical, or dollar, that's all already in the process, exists within the city?
In the existing ordinance.
Yeah. Yeah.
If we go, we have the ability to do what is known as an administrative citation.
Okay.
And is, is there a fine for that? Yeah, there is. And if somebody wants to take you to court, you know, if you win.
If they, yeah. It's.
There's a reason, there's a reason why attorneys drive nicer cars than us. There is.
So this is the same process where if somebody built an illegal structure, did illegal modifications to a building or something, a neighbor complained and then it would be that same process?
Right. In, in some cases, well, you know, if, if somebody has it inside a structure, they're obviously, they're going to run some plumbing, they're going to run a little bit of electricity.
Yeah, but my, my question is, the, the process of dealing with the, the problem. So if somebody modified, did some illegal building modifications and a neighbor mentioned, you know, these guys have done something, okay, so then the building inspector goes over there, checks it out and all this stuff. And then there's all these different processes that fines and all that. Is that the same process? you know, these guys have done something, okay, so then the building inspector goes over there, checks it out and all this stuff. And then there's all these different processes that fines and all that. Is that the same process?
I mean, similar. The building code has some regulations built into it for abating.
Like a noise nuisance.
Yeah, it's more like on a noise nuisance. It's more of a local ordinance, which, you know, the building code is, of course, national. But they're similar. Both are very similar.
The other question I had, the medical marijuana cooperatives, which are not engaged in the sale of cannabis or other exchange for payment of money, are exempt from the prohibition of medical marijuana dispensaries? Can you, so what, can you clear, expand on that? I don't know what a medical marijuana cooperative is.
Well, I mean, that's essentially what a lot of these were, that you could go and before.
But didn't they sell it?
Okay, so, they did. But that was allowed for a dispensary.
Okay.
Under Prop 64, when it allowed people to, that's where, everything's a division of six. Because if, let's say that me, Dave, and Adago, we all have cards. We could all give them to Dave, and Dave would grow six plants for each one of us. That's what was allowable under Prop 64.
That's what a cooperative is.
And then we would basically say that we are a cooperative.
Okay, so you don't pay Dave for that, you just go get your plants when they're ready?
Yeah.
Okay.
And the extension of that would be to have some type of a dispensary through a cooperative on things.
Other questions?
So this is simply a recommendation to the City Council?
Correct. You can recommend it as drafted, or you can recommend it with modifications. It's up to you.
Do we have a motion regarding this issue and a recommendation to the City Council?
I'd like to make a motion that we send this back to the city attorney to have the outdoor grow prohibitions removed.
Do we have a second on that?
Second?
Hmm?
That's it.
Okay. Can we discuss this further before we vote? So that would be?
You can grow it.
Then you can grow it in your backyard is what is being proposed?
Right. That that would be struck, the prohibition would be struck from the ordinance that's drafted, has drafted.
May I?
Yes, please.
Plants remain to be grown outside. And the workaround for this is to put somebody to thousands of dollars of expense. My mother-in-law just bought a tough shed, she paid twenty-two hundred dollars for it. You need a permit, you need drawings, you know, running electrical, running plumbing if you want it grow outside your home. There's a lot of seniors, well, I know seniors in this town who are medical marijuana users. They would never be able to go to that extent, you know. So they rely on people driving it into town now. This puts a big financial burden on people for something that was legal up till, you know, till now, basically. It's, and as a nuisance, you know, it has grow season. I suspect that you can only smell this, you know, in the last few weeks of its ripeness. Six plants, I can't imagine being like a big commercial grow smell. And I was given the address by the Police Department of a grow a couple of years ago so I could go check it out. I couldn't detect any odor. And it was around this time of year when supposedly the odors moved prevailing. I did talk to a neighbor who said they could smell it and they didn't like it. But this is, you know, in my mind, this is a similar problem to neighbors having some German shepherds that smell, you know. What recourse would they have? Do we have specific laws about every nuisance? I think this is more along the lines of people having infections to drugs, wanting to make it as prohibited as possible for moral reasons. It's my personal opinion. I mean, I have no evidence of that, but that's kind of my thinking.
Other comments?
Just for the purposes of commentary, and clearly the attorney would like to speak too, so at some point they would have heard you that. That I can say that since I serve many of the cities and the county in my professional capacity, smell is like the number one nuisance that people are talking about throughout the county. And I would agree that six plants on a block might not be a big deal, but eighteen houses with six plants on a block is a much different thing. And since we're not going to be regulating how many houses can have six plants to a neighborhood, there are issues. So I don't say that for either reason. I'm probably going to abstain on the item just because most of my funding and my professional capacity is federal and it is a schedule one drug of my professional life. So I'm just throwing it out there for what I do here in the community. And I will say that the proposed ordinance that you're bringing forward is consistent with the direction from the class, from the workshop that you held before, where we actually did go into quite a bit of detail about enclosures for growing. So I'll just leave it at that.
Yes.
Also, some people are more susceptible to smells than others. There are things, "My wife can smell, I can't smell anything." And she says, you know, something smelling. So just because one person doesn't smell something or is not affected by the smell doesn't mean that somebody else may be really affected by it.
Did you want to make?
You have anything?
Did you want to add?
Comments?
It's the ordinance. The ordinance, if there was consensus to delete that section, you could simply recommend it going forward that way.
That's all I was going to say. This ordinance has been amended to comply with state law. And so whether you decide to modify it, to remove, or to allow outdoor cultivation or not, we do recommend pushing it forward to the City Council with your recommendation so that we can be in compliance with state law.
Any further?
Yes, Dave.
On the issue of smell, which people will still be able to go out in their backyards and smoke, right?
Yep.
So I think that's going to be a way bigger problem regarding smell than the smell of growing in a limited season. I mean, you know, you can smell it when you walk around in San Francisco or Oakland. Now, you can't, you can't walk around without smelling the pot. And it's so pervasive that, you know, if one person on a block smoking, everybody's going to smell it. I don't think that the growing smell is anywhere near an issue. And in fact, maybe the things that have been identified as growing smells are actually people smoking. Because you can smell people even if they're smoking in their house. But...
But do they, if, when it's growing, it has an odor twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week at that certain time of year, which there probably aren't very many people smoking twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, or still.
I don't know.
I don't know. I don't know.
You got a motion on the second?
We have a motion, we've had a second, we've had a lot of comments. Do we have any more comments? We thought we voted.
I just have one comment. I mean, I think this really gets down to what the root of the role not only of this commission is, with the City Council, is to make a judgment call and determine, you know, are we going to limit something to the detriment of the person who is trying to do it? Or are we going to allow something that is going to inconvenience those around them? And so that ultimately is the judgment call that needs to be done. So I don't know whether that's something that we need to investigate further when this does go to the City Council and maybe some, there can be some subsequent commentary as far as what, as far as what that is concerned. That's ultimately what this is about. Does the person next door, you know, is it just to have them smelling this odor? Or is it unjust to not let this person cultivate their six plants? Is it an issue of quantity? Is one plant okay, but two is not? Is one good, but six is way too many? I mean, I think there are all, maybe some alternatives that can be viewed as far as how far the detriment to the neighbor is going to extend.
John, you got a comment?
Actually, Commissioner, Contreras has hit on one of the root things here. Cities have certain police powers, if we do. And the recommendation based on the nuisance is to protect the rights of others. There is clearly an alternative for people who will want to cultivate. The recommendation is to protect others. The, you know, a couple of instances in town, you go there and, you know, the folks are like, they wave their card and go, "Here, I have the right to do this." Even if it is to the detriment of their neighbor. And in this case, the recommendation is to protect the neighbor.
So in this case, the idea is like a noise ordinance, just to protect the neighbor?
That's right.
Not limit my ability to play my guitar.
But this, this one is specific rather than, you know, noise is a threshold, this one is an absolute.
Well, you're still able, if you don't want to grow, you can go buy marijuana, apparently. I don't know anything about it, but you can get your alternative. If you're not, if you don't want to put a tough shed and all this stuff in, go buy. You know, if you want to smoke a cigarette, go buy it. Don't plant tobacco plants in your backyard. It's, you're able to go out and get it. I don't understand.
So we have a motion, we have a second. The motion is to strike the limitation on outdoor growing from the recommendation to the Planning Commission. All in favor of forwarding this to the, not the Planning Commission, that's us, all in favor of forwarding this to the City Council with the outdoor growth prohibit, prohibition, prohibition struck, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
I'm opposed.
I'm opposed.
Opposed.
One abstention.
So we have, what do we have, Donald?
To get two ayes.
Three, three to two?
Four to two.
Four to two.
One abstention.
One abstention.
One abstention, four to two. So...
The motion fails.
So the motion fails. Do we have another motion?
I'll make a motion. I recommend, or I would like to make a motion that we accept the staff recommendation as proposed.
Okay.
And send it to the...
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Does anybody want to talk about it more?
I have more of a procedural question. Assuming we get out of here tonight without recommending anything to the council, how does, what happens then?
You're fired.
It just goes to the City Council?
It would stay here with the Planning Commission until you make a recommendation and move it on.
But the City Council can still take this up, right? I mean, this isn't something that is contingent upon us passing something for them to get this on their agenda.
You do need to pass certain, the Planning Commission does need to forbid. Simplest answer, yes.
Because this is addressing things other than just outdoor growth. This is addressing making it current with state law. Okay. So we have a motion as it's written, we have a second. All in favor of forwarding that to the City Council, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
And all opposed?
Yeah.
And one abstained. So the motion passes?
Four to two.
Four to two, to send this to the City Council as it was written.
Correct.
Okay. A complex subject that will just get more complex as time goes on and as these rules and... I have one question. So you can't walk down Main Street and drink a beer, and alcohol is legal. Are there similar restrictions on smoking cannabis?
It's very similar to prohibitions on smoking cigarettes, you know, distance to public facilities.
Okay, so it's...
Commercial facilities, all that. But we do have, for example, our parks are no smoking.
Okay.
But I guess if you want to just walk up, rant and smoke and do whatever you want, I think you can.
I think one of the more interesting issues perhaps for cities in the county is the lack of a legal impairment standard and an adequate test for people who are under the influence and what that means for dry, remote, or motor vehicles.
We went to a cannabis, the Yolo Cannabis Summit. It was fascinating. We had Lori Ajax, who is the cannabis czar or czares, if you've heard of such a thing, for California, fabulous. Probably the best speakers that I like for the people who are the, from the California Cannabis Growers Association, the industry group. And they were fabulous. They got a, very credible. You know, it's interesting. John Young, who is the ag commissioner for Yolo County, is probably one of the foremost experts in California. Yolo County, I mean, let's face it, people around here are really not a grow stuff. And three things, he described it, and the folks from the Growers Association completely agreed with this. There's a gold rush going on right now.
Yes.
It's kind of a wild blast. And it's going to take probably about three years for everything to shake out on where things are going to go. But the economics of everything regarding cannabis, this is an industry that's existed for, according to the Growers Association, for a hundred and two years in California. It's been around, it's worked mostly off of the radar. It is, it's very profitable. They estimate that there are about half a billion pounds of marijuana that are grown in California. And from that, they estimate that probably forty percent will actually get into the legal side.
Half a billion? I don't just say billion.
Yeah, half a billion pounds. Probably only about forty percent of that, so sixty percent will stay off of the, kind of in the black market side of everything. Some things to recognize, legal stuff, the words track and trace. If you're going to sell it legally, you're going to have to identify where it came from and where it's going, type of stuff. So there's, everybody talks about enforcement. It's going to be less police and more accountants that are going to go in. I'd equate it seriously to transient occupancy tax and sales tax, that's really what it's going to be. Marijuana comes in many iterations, stuff that gets you high, stuff that doesn't get you high. And I think everybody's going to be very educated. My wife and I were on a road trip up to Washington State and dropped into a dispensary up there. And my goodness, it's, it's a very fascinating side. I can see why people are doing it from the medicinal side, given the way that narcotics and all that stuff that they try and force on us are there. But I think after the first of the year, when legal dispensary is open, I would totally encourage you to go buy one and see what's in there because it's not all about just getting stoned. It's, there's, it's a very multifaceted product. And the thing that was very fascinating, there was a UCD economist, an ag economist, very famous guy, I don't remember his name, but everybody was in awe that he was at this presentation, but he talked about the economic impacts, how much tax money was going to come. All of his numbers evidently lined up with the Growers Association, so the forty percent intrusion into the market, the need that you need to, another word, infusion, is where the legal stuff... The, the need that you need to, another word, infusion, is where the legal stuff somehow gets mixed in with the legal stuff. But, at, at the end of the day, he, the economist estimated that the, he heard the gold rush, all the money that everybody's going to make, every city thinks that they're going to get rich off of marijuana. For Yolo County, they estimate probably the overall economic impact, about $3 million a year. And if you kind of slice and dice that, it's, it's not a big deal. The number one issue obviously for the industry has to do, it's a cash business, given the federal stand on everything. The amount of cash that everybody's dealing with is, is huge. I mean, literally, they have people showing up with a bag with a million bucks in it. You know, here at City Hall, we've, we've had at least one occasion where somebody's come and tried to pay for a large permit with over $10,000. And, you know, that's where, we aren't trying to give anybody a hard time, we love, we like the money coming in, but you have to fill out all sorts of forms, banks, you know, you talk to any banker and they will run when they hear. I, I was pouring beer at the Rotary booth at, at Yolo Fair, and I, I was there with two bankers and somebody, there was always the big conversation. They ran from the issue. They go, no, I'm not going to talk with you about it. But, you know, somebody coming in with a big bag of cash, you know, I dare anybody to try and count out $100,000. It's really easy to, how some of it could go missing. And, you know, if, if, if somebody's till is off 100 bucks, they lose their job. They do. And, I mean, that, that type of money, it's, it's a lot of money. Try counting out a million dollars.
Well, John, this $3 million you're talking about doesn't take into consideration any problems created by people being impaired, what, what he was talking about earlier. Because my understanding is the state of Colorado has, is actually upside down from, you know, they've collected a certain amount of money from selling all this marijuana and everything, and then they've had other issues that have actually turned the profit upside down. That's, that's what I've heard.
No, actually, not so much. The, the one thing that was confirmed, health problems, all those types of things, overdoses or things like that, relatively negligible. It's, you know, the idea that it's going to become this huge public health thing, the one thing we've learned at the Yolo Cannabis Summit, probably not so much.
I, I think actually it's a little bit difficult to quantify overall because there are actually positives. So cannabis actually is one of the only medical aid showing promise against opioid addiction. So, you know, you've got a public health gain on one side, you have some potential minor offset on the other. Clearly alcohol is much more responsible for a lot more mayhem, both vehicular and domestic violence and, and other incidents than has ever been attributed to cannabis. So, which is a fancy way of saying nobody knows. But there are actually pluses and minuses on both sides of that ledger, so.
In Terra Firma, the farm here that sells the, delivers the organic food, vegetables every weekend, one of their newsletters, he addressed this. And he says, it's an agricultural crop. And the, there's a lot of comparisons made about, well, people are going to, you know, because there's going to be a lot of it, so the price is going to crash, people are going to go to ultra-high end like wine, you know, so they can hold up the price. Said the challenge here is a serious commercial grower can grow three full crops a year. And anything that's hot and becomes an item that has a high profit margin in it, the market will be flooded with it within six months. And he pointed out that Calpers has made investments in the cannabis business in California. And his letter closed with, what could possibly go wrong when a pension fund gets into the marijuana business? So it will be, it will be fascinating to watch, I think. Other comments? I mean, this is, this is something we're all going to learn a lot more about. We do have another item, two items actually, on the, on the agenda. We, Commissioner Fraser was the member of the design review committee. She is no longer there. A meeting came up since our last meeting, Dave called me. We didn't remember if we'd addressed this, and the minutes don't show that we did. I volunteered to take on that duty, went to the meeting. So I would put myself up as a member of the design review committee going forward. I think that's something that if somebody else feels compelled to do it. Lisa's already on that committee in another capacity. In this capacity?
Yeah, she is on this one.
Okay, so we have two?
Yeah.
Planning, okay.
Yeah, Lisa's on another committee in a different capacity.
A different one?
Thousands, it's turned.
Thousands of committees. So if anybody's feeling left out, don't worry, we have another committee for you after this one. So I think we have to have a, if, if anybody's in favor of that, we could have a motion?
I'll do that.
Okay, and a second?
I'll second.
All in favor of me being on the design review committee? Aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, now we have the Winters Poota Creek Committee. Carol Sienna has been the, the person looking for a planning commission person to be on that committee and meets, I believe it is the third Thursday of the month of every other month, 6 o'clock. And they oversee the development and care and feeding of our Poota Creek running through town. They have been instrumental and key to the incredible development there. Do we have a volunteer to be on that committee? Ramon, are you not?
I'll, I'll go ahead, nobody else.
Must have a schedule conflict and two other committees.
Okay.
Oh, no, wait a minute, what, what day did you say?
Every other month.
It's on Monday, not Thursday.
Monday, not Thursday, thank you.
Okay.
It's at 6 o'clock, at 6 o'clock. Okay, do we have a, a motion to put Pat on that committee? Do we need a motion?
I would say yeah, although it's not.
I move to have Pat be the planning commission representative on that committee.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
Don't tell me the next meeting's next morning.
It's in November. And you will be notified. Carol will be all over you on that. Dave, will you let Carol know?
I will, I just wrote myself a note, so I will. And I'll be here tomorrow, so I'll tell her tomorrow.
And she'll get you, she'll get you all the information, all of that. Commissioned staff comments, I think we've commented ourselves thoroughly. Are there other comments?
I wanted, oh, yes you did. Well, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Yes, I hope this is a proper venue for it, but I know we're looking at consequential issues before us and, and as they should be. But the last month or so, several events have caused me to pause and ponder. And, you know, we had hurricanes in Texas, Florida, and Puerto Rico. You know, we had the earthquake in Mexico and...
No fire.
What's that?
No fire.
Yeah, and then, yeah, then we have the shooting in Vegas and more recently deadly and devastating fires in our own backyard. The question, and I know John probably has, can weigh in on this, what contingencies do we have in place in the event of such tragedies related to our community? And how can we make these front and center? How can we educate our committee at large using our committee events and other resources to prepare us? I believe we should have a full campaign on proactive preparedness. I would suggest making the committee fully aware and involved. We cannot insulate our community, but we can create top-of-mind awareness related to fires, earthquakes, and flooding events, and I recommend we do so. And I appreciate your indulgence. So, that was my statement.
The past four summers, we've gotten to evacuate our residents four, four times in a row. From a preparedness standpoint, our ability to react is, is, is very much there. My goodness, what happened in Las Vegas was, was amazing. If you can see the episode from 60 Minutes, you see how Las Vegas PD and Sheriff's Department prepare. Active shooter is, is one of, probably one of the biggest things that we deal with. Our staff is, is, is trained. We've actually had three major training drills on active shooter that brought in, you know, unfortunately, a lot, most of them happen in schools or in, in the general area. I can tell you that our, our, our police department for the new PG meat facility has already gone through, and they've already done training down there as far as things. October is earthquake preparedness month. I, I will share with you that the, your cell phone is going to tell you more about what's going on than you can ever imagine. There's a really easy app, it's called Pulse Point. And what Pulse Point will do is it will give you every single fire call that's happening in town as a way to kind of get your involvement. There's also a, something that we have, it's a reverse 911 that you can register for. It's called Everbridge. And it's, if, if we ever need to blast a message out to everybody in town, we can do it that quick. But I, I appreciate you bringing this up, and I think one of the things we can do, I hate to go to Facebook, but hopefully you, you like both Winters PD and Winters Fire on Facebook. Go follow their page, they do a very good job of, you know, we're always giving a smattering of things and your, your comments are totally there as far as, my goodness, the disasters that have hit. But they're always pushing, there, there's more fraud and deception and deceit that goes on out there, and we try and do it through a, a regular information campaign. From a staff perspective, we'll probably be kicking in to some training that, you know, honestly, we'll involve the, the folks on the planning commission, how we activate our emergency operations center, and we'd love to have you trained. In Winters, very similar to this playground, it's going to be an all-hands-on-deck drill. If, we plan mostly for an earthquake. The idea that we're going to get whacked by a hurricane probably is, is pretty remote. But obviously, an earthquake, we've, last May, we participated in a huge flood drill.
A broken dam was academic.
Yeah.
Down on your knees.
If, if, if the dam, if the dam was to pop, we've, over the years, we've, we've done training with Slaughter Irrigation District, Bureau of Reclamation, and FEMA. Because they have to get an accreditation every four years. And just so you know, 12 minutes, 12 minutes, if that thing was just a pop, you got 12 minutes. I'm glad I work on the second floor. I'd be able to make it. But, you know, we'll, we'll bring this up to the staff and, and I, your point's well taken.
That's good.
Can I, just in application, actually? So Everbridge is also YoloAlert.org, so not only can you have the reverse 911, but you can actually sign up for others. So if you're interested in housing, for example, you can do forward slash housing, and that's our, we're also in Yolo Alert. And you'll get our community bulletin board and emergency alerts as well. And I think we should talk about the work that the, all the jurisdictions have been doing in Joint Emergency Management Services, which is GEMS, which is formed by the four cities, the county, tribe, and the housing authority to coordinate all emergency training and emergency management and whole security coordination in our county. It's one of the only systems like itself, but all of us train to the single standard and we all work together on those issues. And fire, flood, earthquake, active shooter are kind of our top four. And I just wanted to throw that out there as well, there's been a lot of work going on about that. Separately, there's a group called the Climate Change Compact, which is all the climate change governments who meet quarterly, and we go through the science and talk about carbon mitigation and extreme weather. And so climate resilience is one of the big topics that we're starting to take up as well.
Great. Isn't there also, is it NICSOL or what?
NICSOL.
Yeah. And then would it be a sign up for and you get alerts? Is that the right name?
Lisa has brought up, Yolo Alert. Type that into your cell phone, get the app.
I have that, yeah.
There's NICSOL, there's Everbridge, there was this other...
Everbridge is the backbone of Yolo Alert.
Okay. Because we signed up for the NICSOL, we get, we almost, we get nothing here, we, we spend time at Lake County, we get a ton of stuff up there. Okay, I got it. Thank you, Ramon, sorry that I, I forgot that you had mentioned it before.
And if I could, just plug for CalFire, because they also have a Facebook page and they're doing an excellent job, and they are both mapping fire locations, but you can get sort of pretty good real-time information on containment.
And with that, at 7:36, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody.